And we may actually be out of here on time. I do, I don't know if anybody wants to take the role of timekeeper, but if somebody wouldn't mind doing that and trying to keep us on track a little bit,
I'll do it.
That would be very helpful. So, this is our annual planning meeting, and for those of you on the board who haven't been here, we really try to figure out what are the priorities for the coming year, and do a little strategic planning as well for a longer period of time. So we'll go through the agenda here in just a second. And good morning, audience. Thank you. So, we're going to do a few little housekeeping things. We'll look at the minutes real quickly from December.
Actually, we're not.
We're not?
Yeah.
Oh, they're not ready. Okay. So, we're finished that one. Congratulations, board. We're on time. We're gonna do, we have two formal complaints that we can update on, and we think we have resolution for those. And then a couple of policy reviews and potential approvals in conjunction with the school. So then we enter the annual planning piece of the meeting, and what we thought we would do is really quickly recap on 2014, to try to figure out how well we did, and there are things that we want to continue to work on for the coming year. And then we decided to look at the charter, just as a way to sort of get us into a creative mood and think about some things that maybe might be interesting to think about for the school. We all agree that nobody is bound to do what the charter says after it's been approved. It's really a charter and document. But each of the board members have been assigned teams to look at a section, and the idea would be, you know, talk about the things that you found interesting and maybe interesting for the school to pursue. After that kind of warm-up session, we're gonna have Dr. DeMello speak about what she believes are really important things to think about for the coming year, that she thinks that, you know, must be addressed. And then Pauline and I are gonna go over what we think, given a heavy workload, we want to make sure we highlight the things that are must-dos for the coming year, because we think for the board, that may be most of our time, so that we don't want to overload ourselves with really, with things that we'd like to do and then really not get to them. So we will spend fifteen or twenty minutes talking about known priorities, and then it'll be more of an open forum on things that we think that we also should be doing. And we'll spend thirty minutes on that. We'll probably end up using the board for that. And after that, we'll go into strategic priority discussion, which are the longer-term things that are probably must-dos as well, that we just haven't got to the yet. And then we'll wrap up with another thirty minutes on really trying to finalize 2015 goals. Any things that we need to add to the agenda or concerns on the board's part of any of the topics addressed? It's, good morning, Scott. Good morning, Chris. You're up?
We up?
No. So for the chair business, we have a couple of formal complaints to update on. Roger, do you want to go first?
We actually have to update all three of them, so these guys.
Oh, there's a third people. Okay. So I have.
You have the latest document. I can read off the iPhone.
I've got my written comments here. Let's find them. So I'm gonna read this out to the board. It's up on the screen. This is our final recommendations from the task force, and the board then needs to accept the recommendation. So I'm gonna read it out. An employee of the school alleged that a former employee created an unhealthy work environment and expressed a desire to work in a harassment-free workplace. Roger and I spoke with the employee three times, and this complaint's been open for a number of months, to try to understand the background, the circumstance of this specific complaint, and then what might be an equitable resolution. So while the board does not condone actions that are unprofessional in any context, we believe there's a difference between unprofessional conduct and actions that reach, those that reach the legal definition of harassment. In no circumstances has the task force found evidence of actual harassment by the legal definition, but we did find unprofessional conduct, things that we're not in favor of. So the complaint and the experience treatment that was very similar to that reported by the independent third-party survey that was commissioned by the board in June, which led to an unhealthy work environment. So we found that there was similar patterns. The administrator that made certain statements and was the subject of the complaint is no longer an employee of AMSA. We agree that the complaint, with the complaint, that this type of communication does not contribute to a healthy work environment. And the board is working with the current administration via the Climate Implementation Task Force to improve the work environment at AMSA. The board is committed to creating and fostering a professional work environment where all employees feel safe to raise concerns and can work without fear. For those of you who don't recall, this was a text message, one of the pieces of evidence of this complaint was a text message, which was, the complaint alleged was to be harassing. So, I think the task force believes there's nothing we can do about this specific instance, because the former employee is no longer working for the school, obviously, nor in the state system. But we do think as a board that we're spending an awful lot of time trying to figure out how to make sure this doesn't happen again. Any questions from the board?
As part of the complaint process, this has already been shared with the complainer.
We shared it verbally with the complainer, so we will then send this to the complainer. And I believe it is going to be on file. I don't know if we sent, we send it to me, so are we just?
Incorporated. It'll be on file and incorporated in the annual report.
Send it to us.
I make a motion to accept the task force's assignment on the complaint by voice, June 27, 2014, as submitted.
Is there a second? Two seconds. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Do you want me to pull the other one up?
Right.
Okay. With the school policy reviews.
So the second complaint was filed in a similar timeframe. Submitted August 25th of 2014, that alleged that the employee was wrongly terminated for engagement protective. Certain activity. And separately, the teachers had filed a complaint on behalf of the employee with messages to Department of Labor Relations, which the board, that adjudicates labor complaints, yield are filed no wrongdoing, and this is all four charges that have been filed against the board. The teachers appealed to the Commonwealth Employment Relations Board, the CRB upheld the DLR's findings and dismissed all charges filed against the school. The task force in complaint had agreed that determining legality of the school's actions was best adjudicated through the legal process at the Department of Labor and Appeals Board. As these legal bodies have determined no wrongdoing and on the schools' behalf, the task force then accepts that this outcome, that the school did not wrongly terminate the former employee. The board has determined further jurisdiction over the personnel matters beyond. Basically, the last thing to say, that the board has no jurisdiction over hiring or determination of employees beyond compliance with the law. And this had previously, just this context, this had previously been on hold since August, waiting for all the legal determinations to be made.
Any questions?
Questions?
Okay.
I can make a motion to submit, to accept the findings of the task force for the complaint regarding a former employee submitted on August 25, 2014, as submitted.
Second? Three. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. I don't have text for the third.
The third one that just makes update?
It says the complaint, we need to provide an update at every meeting until it's resolved.
Yeah, so we've interviewed five people. We've done the interviews. We've met four or five times. We're just about ready to create the final document. And the full and final report will be given at the February meeting.
February. Okay. All right.
What other minor notes? This meeting is being video recorded?
Yes, Dan?
Ultimately, to law compliance.
Okay. Pauline, do you want to take us through the policies, changes? And I'm gonna have to look for those.
Oh, email. I was like, what policy changes? Oh, that would be an email from me that I sent around maybe yesterday or the day before. It has to do with two policies that the school has requested to change. One has to do with a recommendation to remove the restriction on unnatural hair color in the student parent handbook. This was discussed at a governance.
It's the agenda.
Pardon me?
It was on the agenda.
On the agenda email.
Okay, you have it. Right there. Yeah. Pauline, turn it on.
There we go.
Here it goes. Is that the one you want to get to first?
Yeah. I mean, we can just talk about it, because there were three documents that were attached. But at the govern, the last governance committee meeting, the people who were there recommended, or middle of, of the language per the school's request.
It's just a strike there, right?
It's a strike.
So Dr. DeMello, how will this be communicated to students and families?
I'll do it announced, or you can send something out to families. I'd like to do it for a time now and see how it goes, and whether or not people feel that it has any kind of impact. But right now, the, you know, anything that causes disruption, we want to try to eliminate, and unfortunately, it's actually the not having, or having this policy, and it's actually causing more disruption than the removal of it. So I think for now, we'd like to see if this would just work this way.
So are you suggesting that we waive this provision in the handbook for the remainder of the year as experiments, to see if it creates anything unforeseen?
Yes.
And if that experiment goes well, move to strike it on a permanent basis?
I think to strike it and recognizing that if it becomes a problem, we may have to revisit something like we do, I would imagine. Every year, you take a look at your handbook. So my suggestion, rather than worry about it, might be experiments, that we just take it out. But knowing that it's something that I believe has been in place for a while, so striking it, we'll just be watching it, looking at other policies that have been around.
Does this include students that show up to school, let's say, with mohawks, half-shaven heads? How do we?
There's actually no policy about that now. Policy only addresses, currently only addresses, hair color. And it's become challenging, because of the people, or students, challenging it, and some of the expenses that have been incurred by parents, as well to get some of these different hairstyles, and then trying to define, you know, what's natural and what's not natural, and so on. And it's just, you know, it's one of these things that falls under the, well, the big picture doesn't seem like this should be a priority of, but when it's drawing attention and causing a lot of time consumption on the part of administration to either try to continue to administer it or to deal and speak with parents who have differing opinions about it, it can become actually very challenging and time-consuming. So for now, I think it's pretty much general consensus that we will hold on for now.
So is it that the, we're weighing out the distraction that the different colors of hair, the hairstyles would cause to the learning environment versus the policing, so to speak, of that?
Yes, sort of, which is more disruptive to time spent addressing issues, and that there's times, considerable time now being spent chasing down, you know, a pink stripe or something that's, is it red? Is it natural red, non-natural red? How's, you know, how does that work in? And again, compared with the fact that there was language regarding color, but not anything else. So conceivably, you could come in with a mohawk, there was no policy on it, but if you came in with a small pink stripe during, you know, breast cancer month, then there would be consequences. And then, you know, it starts to get into what we're imposing consequences for, and it just becomes really challenging right now. So.
So just as a point of clarification, are we updating the handbook? Is that what we're voting on, or are we voting on a waiver to something that's in the handbook and we'll update the handbook?
My feeling is, is to strike it for now. Not that I shouldn't say it now, for now, strike it. And then, but recognizing, like all policy, it should be reviewed in the handbook. I would imagine it's reviewed every summer. Am I correct in that?
It is, yeah.
And so if there's anything that comes up, then we would address it further if we recognize that this decision, for example, didn't end up being the right one for AMSA. But for right now, having it seems to be more of a distraction than if we did not have to be trying to police this particular issue. And it's not a safety concern or anything.
So have we upgraded, have we updated the handbook mid-year before?
Yes.
A couple of weeks ago.
We've done the, like, the board and the laws and the different types of things, and that's gone out. I think as long as we communicate to parents that this is being strictly, but it doesn't mean that it won't come back. Or it might come, it might come back with different verbiage that accounts for.
Mohawks.
Mohawks and whatnot, and just making it a little bit more fair. I make a motion to accept the policy change.
Second? Ken?
Ken, you're not voting member yet.
Chris. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And there's one more policy change? Is that right?
Yes, the second policy change has to do with the school's desire to implement Google apps for education and give access to all students and staff, I suppose, but this is for students, Google accounts and accounts for these Google apps, which would also allow them to have spaces in the cloud. But in order to do that, an acceptable use policy needs to go out for students and parents to sign. And so that's what this policy is for.
Don't we already have acceptable use policy for IT?
We do.
And is this consistent with that?
We asked them to take a look at it and do some updates to it, so that we felt it was more encompassing for what we wanted to now be doing and to have access to the Google Doc environment. And so I know we had our computer science folks and our IT take a closer look and look at some other surrounding districts as well, to come up with something that they felt was more appropriate, given how we want to provide increased access for students.
So is this going to be a second acceptable use policy, or is this going to, or should we be doing it to supersede and have one acceptable use policy that covers?
This would be the new acceptable use policy that would go up to all.
That seems to be just covering Google Apps.
Yeah, I think this has got to be in addition to.
Yes, it has to be in addition to.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is whether we should have.
I may have misunderstood how they did it up, but I would have to take a closer look at ours. My apologies then. Well, given the title, I guess, yes. Let's say.
So I don't have, I don't have any, you know, I reviewed this. I don't, I didn't have any exceptions with it. I didn't conform it to the existing acceptable use policy for technology, but I think what we should, my opinion would be that we should have a single acceptable use policy for technology, including Google Apps, and we shouldn't have two out there, because that just seems to create a source of confusion.
Did we, actually, did we check that if the existing one would cover Google Apps?
I, my.
It actually meant.
I thought that it, that was going to be my understanding of it, but that's sort of given me a monkey wrench. See if I can get a quick answer to that. But my, I'll see if I can get an answer through some text. But I guess one of my things would be, is if possible for this year, if we could get this in, understanding this summer, we have to converge them. But my, the reason is, I'd like to move forward, because right now, and it has been this way, all teachers, when they're communicating with students, they're communicating to their personal Gmail accounts, which is troubling to me, but I feel like they need to have their own school accounts, where everything is archived and able to be monitored. I think that provides a much safer environment for everybody. And so this would allow all students to have their own Gmail accounts and also access to a variety of Google apps, like Drive, that will allow them to do sharing. And again, it's sharing in sites that are school sites. A lot of students have their own Google accounts, and they have their own, therefore, they may do, go to Google Hangout and so on, and Google Drive and create their own. But all of that is stored independently somewhere, in their own clouds, under their own accounts, as opposed to if it's a school account, and that means everything is, you know, retrievable by, by the school. So it's easier to be monitored and safe. And that's what this allows and provides, understanding.
Can we ask that this, after we've taken the two policies, I also believe that in computer science, you might sign something off or approve it for your child to get a Gmail account, but they don't have an account. I'm not sure if that's still.
This was all run through and created in collaboration with the computer science department.
I feel like that's my child. Maybe, maybe something has changed, because they're much older. It might have been years.
I don't know what they did before, or whether they, maybe some kids for certain accounts, but opening it up to Google App, this is something that they were doing on a bigger scale.
So does anybody have on the board any objections for the school to use Google Apps?
So I don't, but just to follow up on it, so if the purpose is to assist in monitoring, is there some directive or whatever that going forward, teachers are instructed to need to use Gmail, the school Gmail accounts, whatever, to communicate with students?
Yes, that's all set. So they'll, they'll know that all private communication would stop immediately. That every, every communication moving forward would be, the expectation would be, that they would be communicating with students, sort of professional to professional accounts. No more personal communication at all. And again, that's part of the concern, is that that's sort of what could happen now, sort of that can.
So what you're saying, personal communication, you mean?
A person's, a student's personal account.
Right. The only email a student would receive would be at their.
At AMSA.
AMSA Gmail account.
That's correct, because that is held by the school and therefore accessible by the school, as opposed to their personal accounts right now that are not. It's just a safer environment for everybody.
So I think, to me, it feels like the board's probably all in favor of this, and then there's some questions about procedures. Does there any, does anybody have any fundamental issues with the ones at Gmail, getting students into the school email system? Would this be mandatory, and if not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, every student would have an account. We'll roll it out progressively. I think there was a timeline that was included up to you folks, I believe, that it would be rolled out and it would be required. Every, you know, everybody would communicate only through school accounts, no private accounts.
I think that's a good thing. I don't remember sending a timeline.
I didn't send around the timeline, because that's, that's a, that didn't need to be a public document.
It wasn't specifically, it was more just.
It was internal, so it wasn't.
Information, I'm sorry.
I didn't check late, because it's not a public document.
So from a parent perspective, I would just ask that the school think about how to handle it when students already have existing Gmail accounts? Are they managing two accounts? Are they managing three accounts now? Just, just for consideration, as you roll this out, because that can become very complicated.
Yeah, just for clarification publicly here, anybody who has a Gmail account already, that's just considered their personal accounts. Everything would shift to the school accounts.
The only question I have, when I read over this, that whole use assess section, where it talks about the things that the students should not be doing. Do we have any feedback from other schools that have this, use this, how they manage to control it, how it works?
Sure. This was built based on taking a look at other samples from other districts. I can speak to it, having had these in multiple districts, where we had Gmail, I had it in my last two previous districts, and it's pretty, you know, pretty much aligned with that. The most, the thing that struck me most when I came here was that they were using their own personal accounts for things. And I just think that's just not a very good practice, if we can, if we have a better option, which we do. Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the policy.
So I have several questions before we accept this policy. So Craig's, Craig's point was, is there a general consensus that this is a good idea, and I think there were a bunch of nods? And then you said, but we may have specific questions, and as long as we're gonna address that before that. So if we're gonna make a motion and then accept those questions, that's great.
No, go ahead, Ken, if you have some questions.
So, well, I think there's a motion.
Well, I think my intent is to, is to get done with this business, so we can go to the annual planning.
Yeah, so, so several, several points. So you had on here, you know, that it couldn't be used for commercial purposes, i.e. not trying to make money. So if there was fundraising for the school, you know, is that, you know, do we want to clarify that if, you know, if there are communications about fundraising for the school, that that's okay, that you're really intent here? I mean, I understand your intent is, you don't use it for a business, but the way it says here is trying to make money.
Personal fundraising.
Running a business or trying to, to, based on.
So the second one says, commercial purposes, trying to make money, and I'm not, I'm, this is a good policy. I'm not suggesting it's nothing good. I'm saying, should we clarify that school fundraising is okay?
Or just strike?
Yeah, because it doesn't say, you're right, absolutely right. It doesn't say individually.
Oh, you mean, put a school business in that comment.
I'm okay with adding that.
Where?
Well, the state, commercial purposes, running a business, or we can just put in parentheses, after that, put, maybe used for school-sponsored, any school-sponsored activity.
That's obvious. Point, point number two is, it says here, it's selling things, and I think you need to include not only selling products, but also services. Again, just to clarify.
I'm sorry, which number are you?
So that's the third bullet.
Oh, I see.
I think you can put EG in front of it. I don't know if it has to be exhaustive.
I don't know that it needs to be exhaustive either, but when giving examples who say selling things, I think it's worth verifying, just adding words in, maybe sell services.
Things or services.
Products or services, whatever.
Okay.
The fourth bullet talks about threatening, excuse me, that, talks about threatening another person. I'm wondering if we want to include something in there about bullying and harassment in more general, I mean.
You signed the cyberbullying.
That's already a school policy. Anything to do with bullying is already policy in state law. Doesn't mean, could be redundant, but it's already a policy about bullying.
Right, so there are, are there are ways of creating a harassing environment or a disruptive environment that aren't necessarily threatening to somebody, and so that's where.
Yes. I guess what I was saying is that it would, it's bullying, but we have, we have that covered under our bullying policy, I guess is what I'm saying.
I understand, and I'm trying to delay this or anything like this, but it just seems like you specified out here, you know, things that they may not use it for. And I agree with Tom, it doesn't necessarily need to be exhaustive, but it should be sufficiently illustrative. And the fact, I just, I'm reacting to the word threatening another person, and knowing that that's bullying and harassment, all short of threatening someone. And so I'm just suggesting that we might want to clarify.
Could you change the word from threat to bullying?
Or if we put threatening, comma, bullying, comma, semi-colon, harassment.
Reference to cyberbullying, yeah, you can reference cyberbullying there too, I think is a potential.
Or may not be used for any purpose contrary to.
Yes.
Other policies of the school.
And I'm, I'm not suggesting that you just, words meant this here, I'm just, it was, you know.
No, but they want to prove, this is the reason why things should, the policies should go through governance first.
And I'm not excited about approving an additional policy that just applies to Google Docs, so.
So I'll tell you what, why don't, I'm hearing, I think, a lot of confusion and quite honest questions I didn't expect around some of the things that we think in the new. around some of the things that they can be new here. So why don't I pull it back, bring it back, talk to some of you individually, get some more questions, and we'll see if we can get it for a next meeting.
What would be the intent to your intended timeline? So again, the intent of the policy is good. Let's get all students on Google emails. We've got it all in one place. Deferring this until our February whatever meeting, what does that do to your time?
It simply means we can't roll it out as soon as we want to.
I could make a suggestion that the board could empower the governance committee to make the decision on policy since we agree on the conceptional policy, that we could just do it, and that would be February ninth. That would be the actual wording that we have to...
If we wanted to, we could go to that.
And if you wanted to, you could come to that meeting.
All right, so the chair delegates the authority to approve the policy.
Great, that'll leave us with a timeline. If you have particular questions or further information, if you could email Sarah with those questions, collect them for me and we'll make sure that they all get addressed. Thank you for your feedback.
Can I ask one last question? Is it your expectation that they'll be using, that they would use this as part of their studies and so forth? So you talked about use in terms of things that they don't use it for. Are you expecting them, that they would have access to this as they're doing their studies or in the classroom, et cetera?
Absolutely. Many of them are already using these tools. We want to increase access to the tools and also start to lay the groundwork for expanded programs. And yes, there'll be professional development that will go along with it, institute training.
Okay, so we'll, governance, you guys sort that out.
Yeah, I suppose one other thing that you could do is approve, if you wanted to have the board approve the use of this without the specific use policy. If you're looking for the board to approve the use of Google Docs.
Well, we want the use with a policy in place so that students understand how they're using it.
Well, I like Kent's idea. We could say, I would suggest that the board could approve the use of Google, Google app, Google Docs in the school context here at the meeting and then delegate the policies, the policy information to governance.
I made it wrong, but I don't think the use of it, yeah, that's what I was going to say. It's really just about the policy, not the selection of using it.
Good to move on? Go ahead, Chris. You have the last question.
I was supposed to move it.
Yeah, like, can we close the conversation?
Yes, we are. So our next topic is a very quick review of the board annual goals from 2014, just to help us understand how we did. And I think last year we used a simple, I think it's a, I forgot the initials that we used, but I think we need to preach major bullet item. We should agree or that we either fully met, partially met, or did not meet for each of our five or six goals. And the ones that have subbullets, we can run through those too. So our first goal for the 2014 year was increased transparency and visibility. There's, a number of these are pretty specific. I looked through these last night. So the first one's publish the supplementary documentation on the ABSA website according to policy A101. I think this meant for board meetings. It's not clear, but that's what, and that was, and there's pretty specific procedures about when supplementary information should be published to the website prior to the board meeting. I believe it's five days. I would say that for this specific bullet point, we did not meet. We began to do it towards the end of the year. Okay, so, okay.
I would say we haven't met it. Because supplementary document is the, other documents presented for the beyond the minutes. We're making steps, but I would prefer to go on a conservative scale, not that yet.
But they are being published.
Yeah, I mean, the survey documents, the financial information.
In your board, I mean...
Not ever, I don't think... We had a question if we didn't want to actually publish it, we'd give a reference to where you could get the document and the certain references. So I think we...
Partially met. I agree partially met.
So second is parent faculty reps will present a board overview to their constituencies at the start of the school year. So I'll ask Melissa, did you speak with the PTO about...
I spoke at the sixth grade orientation and I think you have...
We don't have the faculty rep.
I believe that just did, I'm not, I'm actually...
Okay, so this is either partially met or not. One C, identify key events where students are acknowledged for achievement. Where board attendance would be beneficial by maybe one. So first identify that these are things that we ought to go to. And then commit to the board being there at seventy-five percent of those. We had, we were tracking those, Pauline?
Yeah, we were tracking them at a very high level. We track them through the end of the year for sure. We have not tracked them per se through this school year. But I think that's not why I...
So my supposition, well, we first, we published the events. We identified all the events. We were on track for seventy-five percent of those events through the last school year. And I think we met, but I didn't, so I would say we partially met. The board ratcheted up their attendance and student recognition events. So let's call that partially met or okay. And I think we got a little bit of recognition for that and it's absolutely worthwhile to do that. And then D, identify key events where board interaction with faculty and staff members would be beneficial by maybe one. This was on the same list, is that right?
Yeah, it's the same list.
Commit to seventy-five percent attendance of those events. Do we feel that we did the same here?
We probably did a little less here.
Yeah, I think so.
But...
There were less events.
But there were less events, exactly, so it was just harder.
It was basically the end of the year, the holiday, stuff were on the list.
Right.
I would call that a partially met without better evidence. So overall, I would say increased transparency and visibility. I think as a board, we did a great job. We didn't meet all of our goals. So let's call that partially met with strong performance. All right. Two, committee effectiveness. The standing committees will operate according to A103. And this is publishing agendas, keeping minutes. I think this is mostly minutes, is that correct, Pauline?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and actually the committees have been keeping minutes, having to do this ahead of time, so.
And then by the end of the year, publish committee meeting minutes to the ABSA website.
That's not met.
That's not met.
In the next two weeks it'll be met, we're working on it.
So we're one for two here. This would be a partially met as well?
Yes.
Okay. Strategic planning. Identify top five strategic issues facing AMSA by April board meeting. We did that. We, this was right around April and May where we began to do this. And I think we were derailed by much, much more board issues. Create a task force to kick off five-year strategic planning process by April board meeting. We did this as well, but that's as far as we got because turmoil happened after that. So by the letter of the law, we met this strategic planning issue, but we didn't do anything. So I would say partially met. Board development, number four. Add two new board members by the June board meeting. Did we do it by June?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Oh, they were there for the summer.
Rick and Scott, yep.
Reach an optimal board size of nine members at large, we did that. Have a board development workshop on distinguishing governance versus operational issues by September.
We did not do that.
Did not. Have a board development workshop on open meeting law by December. We attempted to do that, but then it was canceled for other reasons. So I would say met, met, did not meet, not met. Is everybody okay with partially met for that? Set of goals? Long-range financial planning? I don't believe we did any of this.
Nope.
So did not meet. This was one of those things that we agreed would be something we could do to prepare, to really begin thinking about the rest of our strategic missions. And number six, fulfill mission with changing demographics. I think that none of these were met.
I think if A or B were met, we have not done our due jolt just to have access to this. Or any of those.
So has the administration documented mentorship program for each of them?
Yeah, so it was really just a test that happened.
We have a mentorship program for educators. We have, well, number A, yes. B, detailed procedure for RTI, I don't believe that's been addressed. I know that working on what extent they got to last year, I'm not sure at the end of the year. Ensuring all students have access to the curriculum, supervising application of curriculum, I believe. We are working on, I feel yes, we're working on that. Areas of cultural insensitivity, we're definitely working on that. That's one of my goals for the year. And areas where diversity can be added, we're also working on that.
So C is a met?
Yeah, we have met, or two partially met.
Okay, so partially met on that goal for the year. So just really quickly to summarize. For the first one, transparency and visibility, partially met. Second one, committee effectiveness, met. Third one, strategic planning, partially met. Fourth one, board development, partially met. Fifth one, long-range management, not met. And the sixth one, changing demographics, partially met.
I have two as partially, met two A, but not...
Oh, you're right. Thank you. So I think under the circumstances, there was actually a lot of progress made. I would say transparency and visibility, I think we did a wonderful job. We really went a long ways, as well as committee effectiveness. I think the committees, maybe compared to a year and a half ago to now, are functioning at a very high level. All kinds. And I've heard some really nice things about the educational committees. I did want to...
Take a four more years.
And I think board development, you know, we partially met it, but I'm going to talk about this here in a few minutes. But I think, you know, I have high admiration for the work that all of you are doing. I think we're doing a great job. We have some really, really important, hard challenges ahead of us. And figuring out how we interact with school to help rise to these challenges is probably the hardest part. Any other comments on last year's goal?
I think I would just say in terms of visibility, I think we're making progress in that area and transparency. But I think we're putting effort into it. I'm not sure everybody feels that effort. So I would just encourage us to continue to really focus on that area. Because it's a big, one big aspect of it is reception.
And even to state it more strongly is we can say we are putting effort into it. We can't say anything about the effect. I mean, it probably hasn't had much of an effect yet. So I think we should differentiate between efforts we're putting in and results we're achieving.
Just looking at board D under that board development in the open law meeting. You know, it says have a board development. Some of us did attend the board development workshop, which was actually held here, which pertained to that last item.
Yeah.
So a nuance.
Yeah, we had planned in December for Roger to give us a briefing on the key tenets of open meeting law, but it was, you know, the thing's more...
So the only thing I would say about the transparency and visibility, I think as we think about 2016 goals or 2015, 2016 goals, we consider, we can consider what other actions are necessary and we can talk through some of the different things that we've done this year that we feel that we should continue to do.
Yep. Okay.
One thing I think in the committee, for the board development, you know, we say it's partially met. I think we have turned a page, a significant page in the board that we have a, you know, looking back two years ago, we had six board members, all parents. And we have significantly changed the composition of the board from that point. So I think we've made huge steps in that area from where we were two years ago. So, you know, of all the partially mets, you know, we still have, we still have more to go. And I think our challenges there now are in organizing a larger board to be effective, to be even more effective, but...
No, that's true. One of the reasons everything was partially met was because there were six people. So having thirteen makes a big difference, particularly with the skill sets that we have because the new board members obviously were selected for specific skill sets and experience bases, that's how we were looking for.
You know, I'm not so sure what we should do with this, but having this kind of historical perspective is really important. And it's really because being new, or even, you know, say, people in the audience, you know, teachers, parents, is that we're going through all this stuff and we just think how awful it is. And we've been trying to fix it ever since July and it's not done yet. And it really, it's very instructive to hear, you know, where we are versus three years ago.
Yeah.
And I think that should almost be a standard when we're trying to discuss our progress toward anything. So we are keeping a long view.
Well, and I think, you know, I think I would challenge the board to think about, so let's look forward a year as a minimum and feel like, and let's believe that we're going to be a better place from our culture and management practices. Let's believe that we've solved, you know, we've gotten the entire leadership team in place. We're moving down the path on that. The lawsuits are finished. Now, maybe we're in a new facility, maybe we're not. Think about when all of that stuff is cleared and, you know, what a great position we'll be in to actually then help the school move forward on other topics. And then expanded board is going to be awesome. Right now it feels like the workload's tripled and the board size has doubled.
Yeah.
So new board members, maybe this is for you, that, you know, the workload will go down and we'll actually be doing things that we think are, you know, not trying to repair damage. And I think that that would be an incredible place to be a year from now. Any other comments on the past year? So we're way behind. Melissa, you want to...
You're about, yeah, twenty minutes behind.
Yeah, so for this section, I think it's really important that each of the teams report out on things that might be really interesting. And, you know, we're not committing to doing any of this. And I think we want to limit this discussion, but it's really designed to kind of, you know, expand ourselves out of the current moment, if you will. So Melissa, if you don't mind trying to keep each team reporting and questioning to five minutes.
Okay, you're first.
Strictly. I think we'll move through it and, you know, I think it'll just set a positive tone. All right.
I just ask, Craig, as we start this, just to level set, so the folks did their reviews. I think, I'm obviously seeing a common pattern. People are finding that there's a lot that hasn't been touched in this document for a long time.
Sure, yeah.
And is the anticipation that, you know, we should ultimately make changes and update anything?
No, this is a historical document. It's a historical document that the school is, what we understand is in no way, shape, or form bound to do today, any of it. It was the application with the state to open a school. Then we have an accountability plan to the state, which is, are we doing a good job? You know, I don't know that we could change our philosophy very dramatically in terms of educational philosophy and curriculum and everything else. And the state, it's not necessarily the state's business as long as our accountability is high. So this is really, are there some good ideas that we might want to think about adding to the plate in the future?
Can I make a suggestion that we change the way this is labeled on the website? Because we talk about this as being for charter, is it for our constitution?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
It's a charter application.
It's a charter application.
It truly is a charter application.
It truly is a charter application.
Two thousand two charter application.
Yeah, it's truly a charter application, which is how they cut it out.
Historical document.
Okay, that's good.
There is no charter document.
If we try to change the name of the document, Sarah?
Yeah, she's got it.
I'll take it.
She's got it because.
Oh, you've got it?
Yeah.
And if I just add to that, and then our own speaking about it then as well, because as we talk about it and people reference it, there definitely is the impression that it is and must be followed. And, and that's when other people get into discussions of the challenge, because such as large as we'll find today, large percentage is not in any way being followed, never has been able to come to fruition. So thank you for making that clarification and point of view.
Well, so it's probably worth, it's probably worth making, you know, having a short paragraph explaining the difference between the charter and the accountability plan. I'm not saying you gotta go into a, you know, 30-page thesis on the difference.
No, I think that would be useful.
I don't know that accountability, accountability is actually posted.
It is.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's posted, we should, not, we should.
Be a comment.
I know we're just too observant, but I had a conversation with Sarah Snitzer last year about what is the charter and what's the charter application, and she summed it up all very neatly. She said the charter is a one-page document that you probably have hanging in the lobby that gives the school the license to operate. And it spells out how many kids you can have, where you're going to operate. And the charter application, you know, describes a lot of other things. And that the school, there is some fundamentals in the charter application that the state doesn't want to see the school deviate from. But there are really only a few things that are, it's mandated that the school can't deviate from. So that.
Things like the grades and, you know, the location, number of students, I mean, they're really.
But also the fundamental mission.
And the fundamental mission, yeah, but, but other than that, there's very little of that.
So I would take a fast look at the D's website, because I'm sure they have a what is the charter, what is the charter application, and apply that to our website and have them updated.
Okay, all right, so the first section was Scott and I.
So we'll kind of, I'll give a brief thing. You know, first of all, we had the mission, and the mission is very clear, and that's very easy to find. The vision, we felt it wasn't even a vision. It says, "The mission of the academy will accomplish by creating an educational model using internationally recognized educational approach at the center of academy model. It is highly structured curriculum consisting of continuous, logical, organized, and interconnected multi-year courses." That's what it states as our vision, which we felt it wasn't even a vision. And it was very hard to find some stuff, like the educational philosophy, like we couldn't find it. And I did a search on our website to locate this, I couldn't find it. So, you know, next point, it talked about engagement with universities and industries. We felt that, I'm sorry, it's actually doing a pretty good job with like the Bose and the last board meeting when the students came in, that they're working with like the farm down in Hockington. And that we are doing some of this stuff, but we also felt that we could do maybe even more, you know. But, you know, we're certainly on the right track. Another point that we talked about, and this was actually brought up in our educational meeting, was foreign language curriculum. The charter application calls for seven foreign languages, citing the needs to teach language of immigrant families instead of having to pay for the Sunday language at school. This came up in educational meeting, and we felt that that's just, it's not feasible, you know, from a scheduling standpoint, from being able to fill up to seven different classes. We felt, you know, that wasn't even realistic. But we actually talked about it in, you know, you know, not to throw more stuff on Amp's play, but maybe something could be looked at on doing some kind of school, or, you know, pay for school, or some kind of language school, either after school, after hours, or maybe in the weekend, I don't know. It's just an idea to be thrown out there, you know, just, just an idea.
Yeah, language academy after school versus having kids go into daycare.
There was Rosetta's.
Yeah, there was Rosetta's.
Rosetta's, okay. That was a long time ago, I guess. Just after five, six years.
Oh, yeah, I got a, I got my two-minute warning. Last is the curriculum of the teacher's schedule. It actually called for 20 to 25 hours of prepared curriculum.
Of non-class time.
Of non-class time. And we have no idea if that's even, you know, been met, or what, you know, we have no idea. So that was just, it was interesting to look at.
So the charter specified that half the teacher's time.
The charter application.
Out of the classroom, which is, that's a high bar.
That may have been curriculum development, though.
It was for curriculum.
I mean, because at that time, there was no, right, it was very different.
There wasn't any, yeah.
Yeah, there was no curriculum, they were doing everything from scratch.
But it also, I think, had to do with having the time for teachers to get together, to discuss professional development. And it was probably very feasible when there were 60, 70 students in the school, but probably not as feasible now. It is interesting, maybe not 20 hours of time, but it is interesting. About how much time to be a lot for our staff and our faculty to really coordinate how those things.
I think it was more for the first that it was, that that was designed, that the philosophy behind it was toward curriculum development, because a lot of the curriculum was not developed at that time. And I think also that it was, that there were the teachers coming in, were not necessarily professional teachers, was the other aspect behind it.
Okay, so I'll throw out, though, that.
You're keeping time, Wes?
Yeah, we're at 30 seconds.
You know, some school systems devote a tremendous amount of time to allowing teachers to get together, to review curriculum and, you know, develop new approaches and so forth. So even though they are professional teachers and they are established curriculum.
It was rapid.
That's good. Doug?
Well, actually, four, 54, very good.
Beat that next one.
So Melissa, Jessica's not here.
Oh, so actually, we reviewed the curriculum section and the promotion and graduation standards. And I actually had the same comment about the foreign language. And my, what I wrote based off of our conversation in education committee is, is Latin the right or only choice? And I think that's something that we should discuss, is it the only choice that we give students? I think it's a great choice, but is it the only choice we give students at about six to eight where they have mandatory language? And we brought it up and we discussed it, but I think it's something that we should discuss together. And then I had, you know, when I reviewed it, I had a lot of questions. We had that, that template of what the curriculum could be, and geography and history were broken out, and literature and English were broken out. I think those classes have been combined, other than in the sixth grade, English and grammar are separate. But I couldn't find anything that geography is still taught separately. I know my, my 11th graders had it taught as every other day. I'm not sure if it's still happening that way, so I think that's something we should explore. And then the other section we had was about promotion and graduation standards. And we think that, you know, right now, the passing grade is a D, a 65% or 67%. And is that, do we feel that a child has, has understood a concept fully with a passing grade of a D? Like, are we, are we, are we helping them get to a C so that we, they have a better understanding? So that, that's a challenge. We're trying to get students to understand these concepts and fully understand it so they can move to the next stream in the next class, but I don't think a D is really getting them to where they need to be.
May I quickly, just for another, put another perspective on it? Is also, we're starting these conversations with the staff about traditional grading that some people are used to versus what they do in most public schools now for at least elementary and into middle school, which is standards-based. So that it really doesn't become about the grade. It's about, here are the skills you're expected to master, and when you've mastered it, you can go on to the next one. So it's really about standards-based, not thinking about grade. So just so that folks know, we're having those conversations amongst our staff right now.
I didn't tie myself, so.
I tried to not make you go over.
I think you're good. Allison and.
Have one of you take the first four minutes.
Sure.
I'll take the last one.
I was thinking more like 50, 50.
I'm just going to give you guys a two-minute one.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, when we first looked at this, and I think maybe Scott already referenced the comment, there are many things which, unless you're involved on a day-to-day or from an operational standpoint, you just don't have a good assessment as to whether these things are still happening or not relative to variances that we talked about. So as Allison and I talked, that was one overall, one of our overall general impressions. I've sort of gone back and looked at it again, and there's some variances that are happening because of, say, just technology. There's a section in here that talks about record notebooks and the grades going home in those notebooks, and then parents being asked to sign those notebooks. And we know now we have the portal and various technology applications that do a lot of those things. So back to Chris's point about, this goes back to 2002, that didn't exist while, I don't believe it existed back then. I wasn't aware of that. So there are those types of things. And there are operational things that are more tied into either the overall running of the classrooms and from the student schedule, 35 periods per week, to the teacher's schedule, which shouldn't be any more than teaching 20 periods per week and the balance of that time being left for professional development. Don't really know if that's happening today. You'd have to be tied into sort of the, you know, the principal or ED position to actually know whether those things are currently going on today. One of the areas that I did find a little interesting, which was under sort of a culture piece, which sort of talked about the fact that in our mission, the goal is to not just have kids perform well academically, but also prepare them to integrate into the workforce and be successful. And so there's a piece in there that talks about, on a monthly basis, having a student be a class perfect. And this perfect would be responsible for organizing non-academic activities to give the students sort of a sense of what the workforce would look like as they move on from high school and college and so forth. So I think there's a, there are a lot of interesting aspects to the sections that we were assigned as a whole, section there on special, specialty, special education piece. But to be able to actually say, are these variances significant? Are they still happening today? I don't think we were, felt like we were in a good position to be able to say that, other than here are some very good, interesting things. Maybe they require some follow-up, follow-up to see, are we doing this? Should we be doing?
Yeah, I mean, that's where Evan and I sort of left off, and I think a couple of small points. The, the idea, and I like this part, they called it the culture of ethos, where the environment itself would incorporate famous quotes from scientists, emphasize the importance of knowledge. So the workspace itself, and that goes into a little bit more about the facility and how it's set up. So that's something, you know, where we're transitioning through that. I don't know if we could incorporate maybe some more of those ideas moving forward or not, depending on where we end up. But I, I like that thought, I like the fact that they thought about the atmosphere in terms of the overall environment itself. And then the other part to me is this idea of course of special education and no student left behind, really. And there was a statement that I thought was great, which it says that the academy's mission of cultivating a generation of leaders, and science and technology requires full commitment from us to ensure that every student, every student is challenged at the maximum of his or her ability and current intellectual preparedness with the goal of further advancing this maximum level. So I think that goes back to this idea of special needs, special education, supporting that population of students in our school. And I know we've made strides, I think, in that area, which is, is good, but there's always room for improvement, so.
I just want to make a comment. I love the idea of having prefects. I mean, my, my children are right now, they have the prefect system, and it's additional leadership. And it's not just on grades or anything, it can be, you know, prefect of classes, just, you know, being a good citizen. And it's a great leadership position, and it's also good for college application, too. But it is, it's mostly, it's, you know, leadership roles in the school that other kids can look up to. But I like that idea.
I think that's a concept that the increasing leadership and having students help to take ownership and responsibility, I think that's a great one. I think the problem with the prefect concept is that the word, people were familiar and related to the British background, had a disciplinary component to it. So I think that it, it kind of took on a sort of an antiquated system in some places about, depending on how it's being used. If it's used for the discipline with that sort of stereotype that people have of it becomes dangerous. That's what I mean, if there's a, there's a, it's how you use it, and there's a preconceived notion about the word, I think, for some. But the concept, as you just described it, I think is spot on where people need to go.
I mean, it's, it's used a lot in like the boarding system.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, I was very impressed when I saw that, and I'm glad you said prefect, because I got a little closer here and I said perfect earlier, it's weird.
All right, thank you very much. So Roger and Pauline?
Roger, you want to go or you want me to go?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have this section on governance and sort of enrollment capacity.
Well, appropriate.
Yes, yeah, very, I'm glad to say we're doing really well on governance. We actually are, for a lot of governance things, and the way, at least board governance, we are operating very much like it was originally outlined, but it's actually very close to what Board on Track and charter schools across the nation have outlined as best practices. But there were some variances which we thought, and there were actually quite a surprising number of variances still, but there were a couple that we wanted to comment on. One was that there is an org chart in that document that is, that contemplates the structure of the school as it was founded for the beginning years. And it is in that document where it indicates that there would be a principal who oversees all activities, but focused on math and science, that there'd be a vice principal whose focus was on humanities, and that there'd be a separate head of student affairs, which could be focused entirely on student-focused activities. And we felt strongly that that actually was set up for the founding of the school. Because if you look at how it is for other, other parts of the org chart, that it was clearly to get the school going, and that that was not sort of a written in stone how it's going to operate now. Clearly, the school now is in a very different place in terms of the number of grades and the number of students that it serves. And just with all of that, it's still a guideline there in the back, I think that we liked it, we want everyone to keep in mind, but we wanted to actually say that we feel that that was written in stone. Other pieces of it were that there was contemplation of actually a written manual distinguishing governance and management functions. And while we don't think that's something that, you know, governance can take on right now or that is even a high priority for, for anyone, it is definitely sort of a flag that we wanted to have publicly that we may want to move towards going forward. Not at this time, maybe not in this year, but having those conversations with the ED helped to solidify what, to distinguish what some of those things are. Both for, not just, because I think the board and the ED generally have that good understanding, but it makes it clearer for the broader community, as well as administration, and for teachers, and just for people to know, having that written document. So that's something that we would like to contemplate, thinking about moving towards at some point. And the other thing was, it contemplates evaluation of individual board members, which is something that we have not done. So we do do the self-evaluation, which by the way, everyone's supposed to hand me their self-evaluation sheets today. But the, Roger and I talked about this, and we thought it would be useful to add a component of evaluating committees, sort of at the committee level.
Self-evaluation?
Well, either, I don't know whether it'd be self-evaluation, but we hadn't talked about the implication, but the theory was that we need, that we want to make a board sustaining. And in order to do that, we need to make each committee be able to sustain itself. So some method to evaluate the effectiveness of each of the committees, so they can be better in the future and be self-sustaining.
And the final comment that I would just have was that it did appear that the original document contemplated having feedback loops from staff and parents for a lot of different decisions going forward. And I think we have moved away from that somewhat, there's more mechanisms that we can add to, to be, bring in those feedback loops would probably be helpful.
You have one minute?
Oh, I have one minute. Well, Roger, you can take my last minute.
I think, I think I'd just like to go back to the, one of the confusions in regards to the roles of the principal, vice principal, and. vice principal, and director of student affairs, that it's caused confusion among the, among the stakeholders as to, is that, does that still apply right now? And I think we, as Pauline and I are saying, that the, that the charter was a founding document and does not make sense or should apply now in the application of the hiring of the principal.
And I know there's been contemplations of other leadership structure, and that is completely, that's completely fine, that we should be designing a leadership structure that makes sense for a school of nine hundred and sixty-six students. Time off.
I think that's a topic worthy of discussion somewhere in the later board. All right. Chris and Rick?
Okay. Okay, sure. So all about the details, like everybody's already said. And many, many, many of the details in ours section were really management, not governance, so it wouldn't have been board business, you know, in this day and age. Having said that, there were a couple of things that, that did seem relevant. One was that, you know, I talked about the board as being, one of the jobs of the board is to approve instructional and student achievement progress. And a thought that we had is that having been on the board for just a year, I've seen, I've seen occasional presentations about those things, but how we are evaluating them as a board isn't really clear to me, and I think that's something that we can stand to work on. And then there were a couple of things about.
Chris, can you speak up a little?
Oh.
We got a band here somewhere.
It says that we are, the board, the board approves instructional, instructional and student achievement progress. And I, we see presentations about some of those things, but at a policy level, are we, I don't, it's not clear to me how we approve, disprove, evaluate, or give feedback to those at a governance level.
Yeah.
Oh, I should, sorry to jump in on yours, that was something I missed on ours, too. Also, that student academic achievement was contemplated to be in the ED evaluation.
Unless it give Chris ten more seconds.
I stopped, I stopped it.
Okay.
And I'm going to move it over.
And there were a couple of things about working hours and salaries that I think are collective.